Three or four people that are there.
Okay.
I'll let her know. I'm Genesee County Park.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Well, she gets in a van.
Okay.
You know.
How do you transport?
Um, bus.
Or the car?
Bus, you're like firing for Genesee.
If you ever want a caboose.
They're recording me.
A caboose in there, okay.
All right, six thirty. Open the meeting. The flag. I Julie.
To the five of the citizens of America. And to the republic where we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Mr. Williams reflect that Courtney is out on vacation. Went for me then. With all the obligations to even be here. Okay. First on the agenda, approval of the bills.
I'll make a motion.
For a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried? Approval of the July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes. So, the motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried? Report of the officers. The, uh, ARPA grant, we'll get into that later in the meeting. It's under our old business. Uh, the consolidated funding application for the fifty thousand, that has been submitted, so, like Eric says, we cross our finger now and hope that, uh, we get awarded that grant.
When is that expected to be announced?
Uh, Eric didn't give me that, that timeframe on that. Uh, the solar lights, powered lights for the speeding, uh, to install on the poles here, the solar powered LED have, have arrived. We have them in-house and we will be installing those on Rochester Street. Uh, probably, I'm thinking next week, they should be in, they're not up on the poles.
Are they movable?
Yeah, you can move them, you know, but that's something you want to keep moving around, but it's, you put them up there so they're, they're up there securely. You don't want people stealing them, they're expensive, you know, so. But, oh, you've had them up for, for years now, right?
Yeah, probably five years. They're, they're movable, but yeah, that takes probably, I don't know, two or three hours to, to move them.
So.
Cause there's a solar collector battery box and the others.
I'm hoping they really curb the speeding at Rochester and then next year we put them on Buffalo Road. Okay, so, that's my, my plan. Uh, like I say, I'm grateful to the Genesee County Sheriff's. Uh, the resource officer's been patrolling in the village a lot. He's been seeing, uh, all over on different streets with radar. Been on Rochester, he's been on Park being drive. Tom told me he was up in the parking lot of the Rose Garden, so, he's, he's making his presence known in the village. So, we're doing what we can and very grateful that, uh, Genesee County Sheriff's is providing that to us, uh, from the resource officers, not causing the village any extra, you know, billing, so it's, it's a win-win situation. So, I give my hats off to the Sheriff's Department. The milling and the paving, uh, guys are being real busy, the DPW guys, uh, milling and paving, uh, in readiness for the resurfacing. We're doing Apple Tree, Church Street, Leroy Street, and Spring Street. So, they're, they're repairing like potholes and areas that are broken, kind of, or broken up pavement that need to be, uh, resurfaced and repaired before we can top coat over them. So, they're busy doing that. The electric guys are helping them do that to get ready. Uh, Soup Coat is overseeing that, they're a contractor, it's a state bid contract. They're overseeing that project and they just moved it up for two, for two weeks, so, the week of the fifteenth, uh, as of right now, he told me either the seventeenth or eighteenth, but if we have rain days, it'll push it back. So, I'm gonna give them a holler on Friday to see again how close we are and they're supposed to notify all the residents and businesses prior to them starting so that the residents have some advance notice so they can, uh, make plans for not getting out of their driveways. This stuff sets up very quickly, basically a couple of hours, and you can drive on it, which is nice, but it still could be an inconvenience if people don't know that, hey, you can't get out of your driveway, you know, when they're doing it. So, they should have advance notice and, uh, I'll stay on top of that. Catch basins, they've done a lot of major work on the catch basins in the village. You drive around, you'll see a lot of them got risers on them now to bring them up because there used to be big gullies where the cars would dip down into them. Now they're, they brought a lot of them up to grade, so they, it's a major improvement. We've got the concrete piers in-house. We bought so we could repair the Hickory or Hartley Park, uh, bridge. That bridge is very heavy and it's dropping down into the dirt of the bank. Used to be like this, now it's like this. And, uh, we bought concrete piers, we saw them in the bills. Uh, we're gonna set those, move the bridge, set those, and then reset the bridge on top so it's, it's at a level area and then, uh, grade the, uh, the other side of the bridge. I know, uh, we have a resident here in a wheelchair and he comes down through there and he's having a hard time getting across there. So, uh, once that's in, we'll, we'll grade that out so the bridge is, uh, somewhat leveled and, uh, clean up that walk path too because there's a lot of bigger chunks of millings in there that need to really be raked out of there and, uh, maybe some smaller millings put in there to smooth it out, to level it out more.
Is someone doing that or are the guys doing that?
Uh, we'll be doing that. Uh, we'll probably, we're thinking we'll have to hire, uh, a contractor to lift that bridge out of there. Uh, that'd be the safest way to do this because it's very heavy. He could lift it and then we could set the concrete piers in there and then he could set it back on there. That would be the plan. I'm gonna touch base on that because that's, in, in, on, the project with the bathrooms, I'd like to incorporate that into this ARPA funds.
Okay.
Because it's part of the parks and if they don't qualify for that, so, it would really improve that walking path through there. And the bridge needs to get surfaced too. It's very icy in the wintertime.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, very dangerous, so we'd like to put some kind of coating on it so it's not so slippery. And again, once we get the bridge up, uh, we won't have all the water running off that blocktop park, parking lot, going on there, making ice on it. So, we're trying to make it a lot safer for the residents.
Would you be putting, would we be putting new stuff down on that pathway that goes up that hill there or just taking out the big chunks?
Uh, probably adding some small millings. You, I think you were saying you had some millings?
Joe, we got a milling job coming up and if you want, we can divert some of the trucks from that and it, we're only taking out about an inch of material so you can really find stuff.
That's great.
So, if you've got a spot there, just, um...
We're doing it.
I, I think Chris, uh, is coming over, uh, next week with his truck. So, if he can cone on the spot, we can send over as much material as we need.
Okay, that's great. And then our guys can spread it out.
Okay.
Okay. The sewer, Chris says the plant's been running well, they've been pumping a lot of tanks. They have approximately fifty tanks left to do this year, so we're in good shape there. Kind of thanks to seasonal worker Josh Fleming who, uh, has been a great asset, helping Chris do the tanks. And again, he's only coming in on days, uh, that they're able to pump. And, uh, if it's a rainy day, he doesn't come in either, so we're only paying, paying him to come in on days that, uh, you know, it's suitable and that, uh, they can actually pump tanks. So, AD call, you know, they let us know how many days a week or what days they can come and then, then he comes in and helps Chris on those days. Unfortunately, he's going back to school at the end of this week, but he's been a big, big help and he's been a good worker. So, I'm gonna thank some here to him for his work and wish him the best going back to school. And Chris said, uh, computer upgrades are in the progress at the treatment plant, so, that's all the new, uh, computer upgrades to control a lot of the equipment there from, from inside the office, so. Electric, uh, they're doing a lot of tree trimming right now. We did do the underground service to twenty-eight Rochester Street. We'll finish that up in the fall, next month, uh, when it's a good time to plant grass because we'll have to put some topsoil on that and throw some grass seed on it so it'll grow. But, uh, I've met with the, the homeowner there, actually I met with both, both owners, both.
Thank you very much.
And Chris, I met with both of them prior to doing this and we worked it out, so it's, it's been good. The guys are gonna be providing mutual aid to Silver Springs. They're in a bind, so, gonna help them out. And then, uh, we're scheduling tree trimming, uh, probably in a couple of weeks. We'll be getting, uh, numerous munis from around that, that we help and they come back and help us with mutual aid. Usually Churchill, Akron, Holly, uh, Castile, so they come here and help us. And what else? We did order trees. The New York Power Authorities, again, offering trees, buy one, get one. Uh, their program, so we're taking advantage of that. We ordered trees, uh, hopefully we get, they had Hickory trees on the list, so I ordered Hickory trees to replace Hickory trees at Hickory Park.
And a lot that went down.
Because in, in years past, I've never been able to get Hickory trees from any nursery around here. And, uh, you know, it seems like every year we take one or two down in the park, so it's nice to get someone who puts, uh, you know, puts them back in there to, uh, future generations of Hickory trees in Hickory Park here, so.
Are there others that have been ordered that will go other places?
Yes, we did, ordered, uh, sugar maples along the road sides because they're gonna get pretty tall, but we're gonna put them on the opposite sides of the power lines to try to get some of the big canopy trees back in the village. And some of the streets that are, you know, are pretty bare now. So again, they'll be on the opposite sides of the power lines so we don't have that problem with the power and, uh, hopefully they get big and give us a canopy over the roads again. So, yes, they've been, they're ordered also.
Do you know how many trees is up here?
There's, uh, six Hickories, six, probably eight sugar maples. Six sugar maples for sure and the other two I'm not sure. Garden Factory actually owns those two trees and me have to go get them, so.
So, it's a surprise.
So, yeah.
Mystery tree.
So, yeah, the, the other ones are, are what we hopefully are locked in. Okay?
Thank you.
Uh, we've, we've got Courtney's report. And Gary, the code enforcement, does everyone have his report? I'd like to put a little shout out to our fire department here, you know, I was at their meeting and they had forty-nine calls last month. That's a lot of calls, you know, and, uh, can't say enough for what they do for this community. Every, all of us here, man, if you're out in the public, promote them and, you know, someone who can volunteer, by all means, uh, send them their way, sure, we'll take them in with open arms because it's getting harder and harder to get the volunteers and, uh, you know, we sure really need them. Any questions on any of the reports?
Um, on Courtney's, it's a CPR training, it'll be August twenty-third. Do you know how long that is?
The class?
Yeah.
Can you think?
I think it's...
Three?
Four hours or so.
Two hours? Maybe at lunch? Yeah. Any other questions on the reports? Then I'll dedicate a motion. Here's?
Yeah, it just says that someone got a hot tube. I mean, you got a hot tub, so, just so that it's brief, so we can... I don't... I read it and I just, I was like, huh, that's fun.
You don't miss a thing, do you? You must not have pooed or cereal.
I feel like that would still go slide in all the time, but little things like that.
Okay, could I have a motion to accept those reports?
I'll make one.
For a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. For the judge of the floor.
Well, I do thank you again for the water.
Okay.
I've got a tree guy, but the tree guys are loving back right now, but ash trees are a big piece of cake now and they're, they'll be coming, but not right away.
I know what you're saying. I've been waiting. I got a big willow tree in my yard.
Yeah.
And the same thing, you know, yeah, we'll be there the end of June. I just called him back a week ago and he'll be there now, another week from now.
Well, yeah, and one guy talked about July, then he sent me his estimate and it says September, October, whoa, we just talked about September, October.
Everywhere you go, you hear the same thing.
One guy, it was fifty-five hundred, the other guy told me sixty-six, so I'll blink at that, I said, well.
Yeah.
I got another guy, he's a climber, it's gonna be a little cheaper though. I mean, talked to Laura about moving her fence a little bit, her swing and...
Yeah.
Making sure the kids are...
How many?
Clam, dropping it that way anyway.
How many trees are you taking down?
Just the one in the corner, the one dead one.
Five.
The bugs, the bugs are working on it, but they don't work together like one spot all the way around like they should have, they were all up and down the table. And concentrated efforts from one side, maybe they wouldn't figure it out by themselves. You assign us, it's not one of them that...
I'm glad we could work that out and, uh, you know, we're gonna be happy, so. Okay, anything else on the floor? Well... Trustee concerns? Paul?
I might have any, I'll thank you. Sure, I'm still concerned about that building up there with the wrecking, uh, brick hanging out.
Okay, then you should make a appointment, he's here on Thursdays.
Thursdays, yeah.
So, make an appointment with Gary and...
Well, I'm not gonna, you know, if, uh, he doesn't think it's a problem, I'm just gonna go with that.
Okay.
And hope we don't get sued when it falls on some kid out there.
Okay. Emily?
Um, I had some people report that they were complaining about weeds in Ward Park. I don't know, I haven't been to Ward Park to check it out. I was just told that today and I was like, well, I guess I'll say it, so, I don't know, maybe they've been taken care of, but, um, and then, just a rec update is, it's been going really well. We hired Rachel, I don't know, um, and then job development came through right after, right after we hired someone, but it's been good because they've been running twenty up to thirty kids. Today was a low day and they had twenty-one, I think, is what it was, so, we have definitely had a lot of kids and, so it's been good to have the extra help and, yeah, so.
Again, thanks for what you do with the summer rec program.
My pleasure.
Not just here for environment too, so. Okay, under new business. We have the Jenny Fuzma Memorial Version Five Day Race coming up, it's this Saturday, the thirteenth at eight-thirty in the morning and, uh, we have a resolution here to close the roads for a short period of time during that race. Uh, we usually close the road about seven o'clock probably in the morning because a lot of the runners get here early and they're warming up on the road and, uh, we're looking for a, a resolution just to close these roads. As soon as it's practical to open it back up, we open it back up. Uh, we typically don't wait for every walker to walk, walk through because by that point, usually they're up on the sidewalks anyways, walking. But when you've got a large volume of runners coming down these roads, especially at the start of the race, it's, it's very dangerous if you have any traffic on the road, so, um, this is why we generally, nearly close it, close the village. We can't close the state roads, but we do, uh, the village, so.
Also, is Route thirty-three not, is it, please?
Move thirty-three to Buffalo Road.
Let me, sorry, let me figure that sentence out. So, you said we can't close the state roads?
Right.
But, so are thirty-three...
We can close like Rochester Street.
And nineteen, no? Are thirty-three and nineteen not closed then?
No.
Oh, okay, are they, so it says on here. It says that it's determined that it's necessary to close Route thirty-three and Route nineteen.
Yeah. We, we can't do that. What they do is they put cones along nineteen here, up to, uh, Mackenzie to keep the runners over on this.
So, maybe we need to edit that out there?
We can do that.
I don't know, maybe it doesn't matter, but...
Courtney wrote this out.
We're not closing those streets. Also, the years run down at the very top.
Yeah.
We're, we're way in the future there. So, just a little edit. Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know how much it matters that those roads are in there if we're not closing them, but I was just wondering.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, could I have a motion to accept, uh, this resolution to, uh, close our village streets?
I will make the motion to, uh, close the village streets and, uh, obviously not doing it on Route thirty-three or Route nineteen.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried? Uh, the next resolution is a delegate to the MEUA annual meeting.
Do you have a question on that, Brad, Raisa?
Sure.
Do we have people, like DPW guys coming in on Saturday for that or is...
Yes.
Okay, how many do we have this Saturday for that?
Two.
Two.
Two guys come in.
So, just direct and put stuff up and take stuff down or?
Yeah.
So, is that you, is that usual? I don't know. I'm always, I always seem to be wrong hearing this, so, is that usual that that many come in or?
Yeah.
Is it a different year?
It, it depends how many volunteers you get. I, I, I was like the co-director of that race for a lot of years. I used to come in and do it. Me and another friend of mine from Churchill, we used to come in and do it. But I'm running this year in the race, so.
Yeah, no, I was just curious what, what that was because, you know, always hilarious. How much overtime were you giving him watching that? So, I was just wondering what that was and if that was usual or what, so.
Okay, resolution number ten of twenty twenty-two, the delegate to the MEUA annual meeting, it's our electrical association. I will be attending that conference and, uh, looking to be the name as a delegate.
Barb, did you, did you perfect this one? Well, that, when Barb's perfecting, I will. Meeting is not on the top, I'm sorry. I was hoping someone else would say something.
I make too many phone calls to, to call also, I'm not going to.
I'm like, I don't want this to be submitted somewhere when it sounds like this, so, I'm like...
I knew it would be the top one.
I know, but I'm like, I feel like if you don't, like, these things like that are easy to mess up, I was.
Or, yeah, because you're reading and it just flows sort of.
Yeah.
They say to walk away from your own document, please, and I, and I...
Yes.
I do.
Uh, but yeah, with those, on its side.
Okay.
I approve.
Moved by...
Mayor is the...
Emily, is there a second?
I will second.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, the third thing on here is a request to purchase the sweeper attachment for our Bobcat skid steer. I'm passing that, I think we all have a chance to look at the brochure on it right here. We, uh, we have nothing in-house really that can sweep up anything at this point. Our, our sweeper truck is, uh, useless when it comes to that. We don't have, uh, major, major money to purchase a new one. Paul, how much is a new one?
Start at three hundred.
Three hundred thousand dollars. It's, it's, it's not worth putting any more money into. The back hose is broke on it now and it's fourteen hundred dollars for a quote, just for a hose. It's one thing after another and it doesn't, it just doesn't pick up how it should. It's got major problems. This piece of equipment, we can put on the front of one of our skid steers, we have new skid steers, so they're very reliable and, uh, it actually sweeps up, it just doesn't brush stuff off in an area in a direction. It actually has a hopper that it collects, so, like all of, along Main Street here where they flip their cigarette butts and papers and that in the road, you can go by and sweep all that up and it'll, it'd be just like a sweeper truck picking it up. We can use it for, uh, even leaves in the fall. You could go down the road and gunk along the gutters and get leaves off, up the gutters. Mike Johnson really sold me on when he said he uses it for picking up the chip seal. You know, when we did our roads, he actually uses that on the town roads to pick up, he goes, yeah, it takes a little longer, but it works. So, I think it's, uh, it would be a valuable piece of equipment for the village to have. This quote was only good for a week, I don't know, because of prices of steel now or what, but, uh, it was nine thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars. I don't know if that price is still good. It ran out April first or August first, I'm sorry. So, I'm asking the board, uh, here to, uh, purchase this piece of equipment, this attachment, and I think it'll serve us well, so.
So, what, is there a plan for the current sweeper truck?
I would, uh, I would say we sell it, get what we can out of it at the auction.
Is there anything on it that works right now other than, I mean, it drives, like the body of the truck is?
Does the catch basing claim, or the catch basing claim tube still work out?
The tube is what, they just went and they went fourteen hundred dollars just to replace that flexible tube.
Oh.
So, they've been just putting like duct tape on to try to finish up what they're doing with the catch base.
It's not really good for that anymore.
And they said it wasn't picking up like it used to.
Probably the propellers weren't.
I, I don't know. The old superintendent here, he chopped a lot of wiring and tried to fix things and, and it just made matters worse.
So, is there not anything that really that works on that pump then, other than you could drive it around if you wanted to?
Yeah, that's about it.
Okay.
As far as going down, trying to pick up, it, it won't pick anything up in the roads.
Kind of like that for quite some time, two years, right?
Yeah.
Do you know estimate, like what that would get on?
I have no clue.
On the watch, do you know, Paul?
I would guess twenty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred. I mean, you're buying it basically for parts, sweeper part. Obviously, there's an engine that does run on it, um, so, you know, there's, there's some value there, but it, it, it's hard to say.
Yeah.
You just gotta, somebody's looking for parts off it, so, you know, are there ten to, to make it a competitive bid? Who knows, we'll, I guess we'll find out. Nice thing with auctions international though, you can always reject a bid or reach out to the highest bidder and say, hey, will you go to this place? So, if you've got...
Right.
You know, price in mind, what you think you gotta get out of it, you can do that, but, um, I, I guess it's up to you.
Yeah.
Do what you gotta do.
I don't wanna mislead bidders either, you know? We advertise, we're gonna tell them, you know, there's problems with this. We're not gonna advertise it as a, a class one unit, you know, that's, uh, we're gonna tell it how it is and then what, you see what we can get. Like Paul's saying, if you don't get what you want, you don't have to sell it.
Right, I was just curious what of that could potentially go toward, um, the next one. How long are these expected to last? Like the street sweeper, it was like, everything just goes and so a whole lot of these parts are the same where it's sucking these things up. Are those still the same kind of parts that are just gonna break? What's the difference between the two that one of them would last longer than the other?
This one doesn't have suction on it, it's got brushes, steel brushes.
Okay.
And they just turn and they sweep everything into a hopper. Whereas the other one actually has the... Whereas the other one actually has the suction head on the, you know, a lot more moving parts. It's probably the most highly maintenance vehicle there is, isn't it, Paul? A street sweeper?
Yeah, if you use it, yeah, I would say so.
Can I skip that?
It's a plumbing nightmare, a, a modern street sweeper.
It's, it's, you know, you think of what it does, picks up stones and it's just really abrasive. And there's a lot of hydraulics and.
So this is like our little restaurant, like the old school restaurant, like push it along and it.
Almost, but it's, it's motor driven, so, so, you know, off the hydraulics of the, uh, the skid steer.
So are those hydraulics good? I feel like that's something where it's like hydraulics aren't going. Is that something where they're better than a street sweeper?
There's a lot less of them. And when they do change, you know, choose an NAPA item versus a, you know, dealer specific item like the street sweeper.
More generic.
There, there's only probably, uh, probably six hoses on, on the one that you're looking at there. I mean, you could count them on the picture there. There's not a lot of plumbing to that versus a full-blown street sweeper. Not a lot of capability versus a full-blown street sweeper either, but, uh, you know, it's, it's a poor man's road sweeper is what it is, yeah. And I think for what Joe's intend, the DPW needs, I think it'll work well. I know it'll work for the millions that they just did along Park Road. I, I don't know how you guys clean them. They did it by hand or not, but, uh.
Well, they've been using that suction tube.
Okay.
You know.
But yeah, this would work on that as well.
So the gutter piece then, that would be like, you would use it on like Rochester Street where there's the.
Or along the curb out here and along the main street. Along the storefronts.
So that just kind of sweeps it into the main sweeper?
Yeah.
So how long is it expected to last? Is there a, this is?
I would say based on the use, I think you guys are gonna have a hundred and six, all of a twelve to fifteen year machine and probably longer would carry.
Um, is there any possibility to share with the town? If the town has one right there, I, I don't know how often. I mean, it sounds like you won't be using this, you won't be using this every day, but there's a lot of different opportunities. Is that something where it would be able to do a shared service? Um, just thinking about that, I mean.
I think the town's renting is when he needs it now.
Yeah. They don't have.
They don't even.
Oh, they don't own now?
And we would use it a lot, Emily, if we had it. Because every day you pretty much, you go out there, those cigarette butts are all over the road out there. People, you know, what are you gonna say? But, uh, I know when I was DPW superintendent, I had the guys down there almost every morning running it. You know, we used to have one, I'll be honest.
Of these?
Yeah, we had one and the old superintendent sold it. He bought another piece of equipment and used it, used that as trade in, oh, let me trade this in so we can lower the price on that and. That wasn't, that wasn't a good move. But, yeah, we, we had one and we used it a lot and it worked well. And I thought we still had it, to be honest, and then when Mike told me that's what he was using to pick up the chips. Yeah, I go, oh, we got one of those, I went to Nick, I go, hey, we got, no, no, Gary sold that off. So, okay.
How often does the town, I'm curious, do you know how often they, they rent one? Because the way you were talking, it sounded like they owned it, they use it a lot or?
I can't speak for, for how often he rents it.
I don't know either.
All right.
If Gary saw that, must have approved by the board. He just couldn't just sell a piece of, I can't come down and.
Dad, I don't know. That's, I wasn't here, I don't know.
I don't remember. I don't know what we're talking about, maybe so.
Supposed to be, uh, supposed to be declared surplus by the board when you sell anything to anybody. So whether it was or it wasn't, we don't know and we're not here to, to figure that out today, so.
Yeah, that's.
It's a good point.
Water under the bridge now.
I guess another, sorry, another question is just where is the money coming from? What budget is there money for that in there?
It's actually allocated, all the departments can use this thing. So it's, it's allocated commod, uh, electric, which, uh, is in good shape.
So the entire thing?
Yes.
Which come out of electric?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not too many, gentlemen.
Anyway, it's always interesting to me how you can do that with different things, but then use it with everything, but pick out one. But I know that works, so. Um, another question is the catch basins, how would we, do we have a plan for that going forward? Is that just like, we don't have something now, so this is really something that can do some of those things we need?
Right, this, this will not suck out catch basins.
Right.
We would still have to rent a machine every, I don't know, two, three years to, to, uh, suck out the catch basins. But when you, again, when you look at the cost of a new machine, I mean, rent a machine, you know, every few years, because you could do this whole.
I mean, I think doing a street sweeper is out of the question, so I.
We're by far better off renting a machine every now and then, every few years, do our catch basins, try to purchase something. All good questions, Emily.
I guess I keep thinking, I'm like, ugh, is it tough? There's all this stuff about like pushing through, um, sharing.
Shared services.
Yeah, shared services. And, um, like, is there any way that we could use this, that it would be a good, like, shared service with the town other than, I mean, I feel like the obvious thing is like, we buy it and then the town uses it and that's kind of just how it goes, but I, I don't know. I guess buying, you don't want to buy a thing between people and be like, hey, I own this half, you own that half. That doesn't work out well.
Trouble with, and then you have maintenance problems, you gotta get something fixed. Who broke it? Oh, you broke it when you had it.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's usually just better to have it and then if the town needs it, they can use it. Or Paul at Churchill needed it, you know, he could use it. We use Bobcat attached ones from Churchill all the time.
Yeah.
You know, and Mike's gonna be, uh, he's gonna be sweeping our roads for us because he's got a metal brush on his.
Which is like what this is, is that what he's?
With the hopper, it doesn't collect, it just kinda moves it.
Okay.
Basically just a big sweep room.
Okay.
It's different, it doesn't collect, so, but he's gonna do these streets that were getting micro paved done. He, uh, has offered to do that for us because they're, they're gonna be doing Merriman Road same time. So he's offered to sweep our streets prior to them doing it.
Okay.
So again, they're, they're, they're using their stuff and they're trying to help us, so, you know, we're gonna do the same to help them.
So is that like, it's just sweeping up off of the dirt and it's like pushing it into another road? What's happening?
It just pushes it off the side of the road.
Oh, it's just off to the side.
Just so that, you know, you don't have sticks and stones.
Want to lose material off the road.
Yeah, yeah, just, I guess it makes sense that pushing it off, I'm like, you're gonna have it all at the end of the road on another road. What's the point of that? So that makes more sense. Um, yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, I hate to just say, yeah, let's spend ten thousand dollars when I thought about it for, I guess the clock's over there, half an hour. But it. I don't know, I mean, it seems upfront, I, I haven't researched it, I didn't know anything about it before today, so. I haven't researched it beyond this conversation.
If you wanna wait, I'm not trying to rush you into anything here.
Yeah, I guess if that offer's already up, it's gonna be different anyway. Could you? The same, could we like see another? I don't know, I guess I'm curious if the price is just like keeping to go, like continuing to go up? Or if it's right, right, but like what rate is it going up? Is it? I don't know.
The price of steel is what's driving all these quotes.
Right.
I, I mean, usually you get a quote, it's good for thirty days.
Yeah.
This is good for a week.
Sounds crazy. Are there multiple places that sell them?
Is that?
Are there multiple places that sell them? Like, is that, or is this like, this is the place and this is the order that are multiple places?
There, we, we got another quote from Bobcat.
Okay.
And it was like, I think it was four hundred dollars less, but the quality wasn't nowhere near what this one is. So that's why this was, in the long term, we thought this was the best, best unit.
Excuse me. This Bobcat is not known to be as good or the same, was there some like parts that were different or?
Uh, the coating, uh, this, this, this one has got better coating than the inside. It's just, it was a heavier duty machine than the Bobcat. We like Bobcat, you know, we buy a lot of their stuff, but when you see something that is superior, you go, oh, this.
Yeah, and for four hundred dollars, that's not a huge difference. Um, is it easy to empty? Like, is that?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe I'll go right in the front.
I can just tip it.
Tip it, oh, that, that also makes sense. Okay. Yeah. I don't know, what do other people think? Anybody else have any thoughts?
What do you, Paul, what do you guys think?
Well, I think we've all known that sewer or this sweeper has been, you know, been in trouble and really is grapple with declining health, uh, but we've all known that. So this gets you through this by the time, this keeps your capability for the sweeper going. And like you said, it does help you clean, you know, Main Street and, and some of your other road projects. You know, another thing with gutter broom too is, uh, if you zip that up and down Rochester Street, that helps you keep the grass growing up in between those concrete blocks, things like that, so, um, you know. To me, I, I, I'm all for it. I think, you know, given our budget situation and the price of, of a new sweeper, the usual for that matter, this is probably the best route to go to, you know, to do what you gotta do. You're still gonna have to rent a sweeper occasionally to do, you know, some things, um, but, uh, I think it's the best route to go with the resources that we have.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, uh, is there a motion to purchase this? I'll make all piece of equipment. Paul, is there a second? No second?
I feel like I just wanna hold on, do a little more. I, I'm torn, but I, I don't know. I'm not ready to stop on it now.
Okay. George?
Well, I think that, um, I think it's a good idea myself, yeah. I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Nay. I'm half nay.
Okay.
Break my town power, could I? Just kidding.
Okay.
I think we have to default to the, the people that deal with these kind of things every day. And, uh, if they feel that strongly about it, I have to go along with it. It doesn't sound like a bad idea if there's money in the budget.
And that's fine, that's something I just, for me, I have a few more questions that I wanted to look into, so I, I thought that you'd be.
Yeah, sometimes you have to trust the people you're with.
Cool, Emily, and just see how they operate, you'll see that it's a pretty capable machine through the size and the price, it really is.
Can I ask a question, please? You said that it was only good for a week. How would you know when you go back to them if it's still gonna be at that price? What if it's gone up considerably and you don't know how much it's going to cost you?
I don't think it'd be considerable, uh, like I said, it was, just ran out, so.
Joe, would you like to do a not-too-exceedable?
Yeah, we can do that.
And, and the full price you have is?
Ninety-three fifty-three. Not to exceed.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand. Does that sound good? I don't think it's gonna look that way. Yeah, not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Okay, under old business, the Hickory Park bathrooms. After our last meeting, we, we had the cost estimate from C T L. Uh, ninety-two thousand dollars to renovate the bathrooms. That was the, yeah, just to renovate the existing bathrooms. We're talking, we, we think that's really high for what we think are utilizing our village help. I think we can cut that mass will be down. And, uh, we've got a diagram here, it's a pretty simple diagram. This doesn't show the whole building, but as you can see, uh, the layout inside, uh, the front doors would be in the front of the building rather than on the side.
That's, oh, you guys have a.
You'll notice the doors now are on the front of the building. Which I like, uh, even as a parent, I like that because if you have one child going one side and you have another one there, you can't keep track of the kids. So this way here, you know, they're both gonna come out in front of the building. We would seal up those other side doors. Those doors that are existing now are rotted anyways, so they have to be torn out or replaced. So we would move the doors to the front of the building. There'll be an overhang, uh, Courtney wasn't able to put the overhang on this drawing either. But anyways, over this bench area, there'll be a, a roof coming out, the existing roof, another roof coming down with a couple of pillars.
Just in the center, right? Like above cover the doors or?
No, no, it just, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'm trying to think how wide that building is. Sixty feet. Yeah, so it'll be, it wouldn't be the whole, the whole building, but it'll, it would be an extension off the roof uh, to provide some shade over that with the bench underneath it in the middle. Couple of pillars, you know, coming down, kind of like the sage, you know how that roof comes out?
Yeah.
And it changes the whole look of the building, you don't rather just look only like a, a box, it'll, 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 it'll look nice. Some of the work we will have to contract out. Uh, I know cutting, cutting through the block to replace these doors, our guys wouldn't be comfortable doing that. Uh, we, we have to hire that out. But Eric, our employee, is very, uh, very good at this remodeling and he's, he's had a lot of experience at it. He's very confident and he's, he's looking forward to it, you know. Him and Zach are really looking forward to, uh, putting their name on this building and saying, hey, we're very proud of we did that. So I, I think, uh, I think they can do it. I have a lot of, uh, faith in what they can do. And I think we can save a lot of money doing it in-house. What I wanna do tonight is see if I can get the board to approve, uh, allocating a dollar figure so that we can start ordering this equipment to get it in-house because I'm sure there's some lead times on some of it. I'm looking for this and for the bridge repair, we talked about the bridge at Hartland Park. To, to raise a bridge, put the piers in place and grade that all off, get it, get it better. I'd like to ask the board for a figure fifty-two thousand dollars to renovate the bathrooms and do that bridge repair.
Do you have quotes on anything, like?
Uh.
Everyone says something to that, do I miss?
I, I got a quote, I got a quote from a contractor, but a lot of it was under prevailing wage. Mark Diltred actually was working on a, a, a rough quote on it. I, I said, you know, we do this, probably gonna have to go out for competitive bidding, you know, depending on how much work we, we have done, but, uh, I, I, uh, I ran through a lot of numbers in my, my head and put pencil to it and for the fixtures, you know, the toilets, the sinks.
Joe, we got an itemized list from the engineer.
Yeah.
The last board meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Showed that. Um, and then there are rough estimates of the fixtures. Fixtures are the same no matter who installs them or who does, you know, the under the floor work or whatever, so. We had a lot of that to start with. I, I think they're a little inflated for inflation and things like that, but, uh, we've got a rough ballpark for the the equipment on the interior, people. So really what, what's outstanding is any contractual work that we need to do, and any materials that weren't on that itemized list, like maybe flooring or things like that, I don't recall that being in there on the itemized list, because I don't know, it wouldn't be good.
I, I haven't, but. Again, her, her list was ninety-two thousand dollars.
Right.
So we've not.
So the fifty-two thousand dollars would be going towards fixtures and?
I'm taking fifty thousand for the building, to renovate this building, and the two thousand was actually for the, the bridge repair and, and the walking, walking trail there. Time, time, that's it.
And Joe, that's all American Rescue Funds that was granted to us from the federal government, right?
Yes.
I guess it just seems strange to say like fifty thousand, not like a specific thing, but I guess it's inside of a bathroom? I don't know, I guess that's the interesting thing to me, is that it's not, we don't have a contract in front of us, like, this contractor is doing this, this is the proposed thing. So if, if that's what that money is going towards, how do we approve it without the contract? You see what I mean?
Well, we have the money, we have the money. So it's, we, whatever we spend it on now, we have to get receipts for.
Right.
Okay, so, you know, I, I can't, I don't know how many hours it's gonna take to do this job. That's why I'm just asking for a bulk number, which was way less than what Clark Patterson Lee presented to us. If it doesn't cost that, it doesn't cost that, we're not gonna spend it, you know, we don't have to, but, to get started, we need a dollar figure in place, so we can start ordering doors. Three doors are seventy-two hundred dollars. You know, I know that, I know how much these toilets cost, and, uh, it's just, there's some other work to be done here, and it's hard to put a number on how many hours, set hours it's gonna take to do it.
But we don't have to, the set hours are saying those are coming from our guys though, right?
Right.
So that's not in the fifty thousand?
But we, we, I believe we can allocate the hours from that money. Rather than take it out of our budget, out of our general budget.
Okay, so you're paying, okay, you're paying the guys with this fifty thousand as well?
Yes, the contractor.
And moving.
Out of labor.
Moving that, okay, okay. That makes more sense than why there's.
Yeah, I mean, any hours they were to put in there, we'll have a code for this project, and they would allocate, you know, here's, here's how many hours towards that code, keep track of it.
Right. Okay, do we have to, do we have to do a, a match with this, or we just, we just have the cash and the stuff?
We have the cash.
Okay. Okay. And then any additional, like you said, you were waiting for Dilcher for a, a contract that will come through, and that would be an additional?
Any work that we can't perform, yeah, we would have to get quotes on.
Okay, so that's not coming up on this, okay. Um, sure.
We're definitely gonna save money, there's no.
Right.
No way it's gonna get very ninety thousand dollars.
I just wanna make sure what we're spending the fifty-two, like, I know what we're spending the fifty-two on, it's like.
Right.
What it's going towards, so. That makes sense that the guys' hours are included, yeah, I was not thinking that at all, so.
I don't hope, I hope it's less than that, you know, but, I, I, again, I'm just, I need a ballpark fear of what not, you know, right now, we're gonna, you know, spend these funds, and I just need to figure that the board's okay with not to exceed a certain amount. If it turns out it costs more than that, then I will come back and say, hey, here's, here's the figures, here's, here's what's going on, and, uh, we need another, whatever, or hopefully it's, it's enough, and we can use the rest of the money that's in that account to further improve the park, I mean, we'd love to do something with that roadway in the back parking lot area.
That'd be real nice.
That roadway, uh, I'm, I'm, that's our, our plan, okay? Whatever we can save, we'd like to go towards, you know, improvement of the park.
Yeah. Um, I'll make a motion to start ordering things for the bathroom project, um, and the bridge repair not to exceed fifty-two thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved, okay. Thank you much. Anything else before I close?
I have a question on this, please.
Okay.
I don't have animals, so, um, on the diagram here, next to the water fountain, it says dog, what is that, please?
The dog watering bowl, just, it's basically just a spring loaded valve that's down on the ground with a, a bowl that's connected to a chain, so somebody can't walk off with it, and when you're not walking your dog.
All right, so it's just a watering station?
Just a water station for the dog.
With a dog, yes, you said it's a spigot, and there's a bowl at the bottom, so there's, there's no, um, oh, what's the word that I'm on? I'm sorry, my mind is playing. It's low enough that it's not going to impact, like, say.
I can show it to you, Grace.
Say, you're, yeah, carry on. You know what I'm, you know what I'm trying to say?
It's just for people walking their dogs.
Okay. Okay, okay, sand carry.
You fill up the water.
Sand carry is one of the things I was saying.
You're not sharing a fountain with the dogs.
I know, I know, I, I knew, I knew that, I knew that for sure, but in my mind, I just couldn't.
Yeah.
Is there gonna be a spigot put on there somewhere, so that, um, either on the outside or maybe in the, the secret closet? So that. So that, I'm just wondering if that would be high enough for, um, like the guys take down water every day for rats?
Oh, we can.
Thinking like, that would be something, if they had that, and they could even put a hose on the end of it, then they can do water activities and stuff like that.
Yeah, you could easily do that.
You could put a key to water spigot dedicated to a hose on there anywhere, so.
Yeah.
And where you've got plumbing inside, it's a matter of putting a wire, see, and a.
Yeah. Inside, so it'll be.
Well, you could put a key on it, so that.
Oh, okay.
Not a car, there's a, I don't know what you call it, a little specialized tool that turns the water on and off, and designed to whoever needs the water. Just so that, you know, people aren't just leaving a valve on.
Yes, that's, that's why I was like, put it in the closet, but yeah, that would work too. Any of those, either inside or outside.
Yeah, it's easier to have it outside, then you don't have to worry about, you know, your toilet paper, things missing out of there, if you give a key to someone, you send the water hose to.
Yeah, yeah, no, that would be great.
Okay, anything else?
The old basketball nets, I noticed on the basketball court, the one on the east end is blonde, stepping around. The west end, I noticed some guy sitting on the rim, fixing the one. I don't know, he got up there, maybe it was off of his buddy, but he was sitting there, I think it was lighter tape in the background, the thing, so I don't know. But the east one, I noticed the pin that's maybe like this high up the ground, seems to hold the big arms, and has this bent to it, so I don't know if other people are hanging off the rim when they go there. So I said, well, that's not gonna be good to have a bent thing, pin there where it might come down, but. And that's kind of weird, they got like a cable going around holding them out.
Yeah, I know.
I go, huh, okay, but I see the guy sitting there, I'm like, oh, good for you, buddy.
Unfortunately, you can jump up and grab them, and you make them down, the nets, you have to. It's a thing, you're under there playing ball, and you're always jumping up, grabbing, you know, and they just rip them down. So we've replaced them over and over.
You might have to ask your neighbor about this tomorrow, but there's a guy that walks two pit bulls. I encountered him twice in the park, and Tim Russell has encountered him once with his little dog. And he's had to pull those pit bulls way over by the fountain that they refugulate in, and they sit there and growl at you when you're walking by. And that guy's got a hold of both leashes. And you're walking by and hold the leash, that's all I'm gonna be doing when those dogs break loose. I'm not gonna be able, that guy's not gonna be able to stop them from coming to you, because that's what those dogs wanna do. I don't know why someone has dogs like that, I don't think he lives across from Renee, but it's the second time I've seen him. I don't even want people to have dogs like that, but.
It's not the dogs, it's the owners.
Well, that's true too, but like, Tim, Tim Russell, yeah, the dogs will go to growl, like, they wanna get loose, and my little dog's here, what am I gonna do with it?
I, I helped that guy out when I was walking my dog, the first week I lived here, they attacked each other.
The two dogs attacked each other?
Across the street, and took him down, so.
Was he river got attacked?
No, river, I, I tied river to a fence on the other side, this was walking, I haven't been names of the roads yet, because I'm really new here, but it was the road that goes into the back, into the Hickory Grove behind the park.
So McCandie, maybe?
Yes, yes, sorry to talk out of turn, I know this is not where the roads were. And I tied my dog, I just looped her leash around the fence and went over to help him, and, um, the dogs were too busy with each other, and he said he was fine, but I was afraid that they were attacking him, a thin man, kind of blonde?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And he's talking to the dog, so I'm walking by, I'm just, so I'm like, all you do is hold the leash, and that's all you're gonna be doing, they complain to me. And that's not gonna work for me. But that's just, why do you, why do you have two dogs like that?
Yeah, well.
It's not the dogs.
Yeah.
Trust me, there's no like dogs.
And he realizes it, because he takes them way over, but they still see you.
Maybe we should, uh, invest in it then.
But anyway, I don't know, I know he knows where he lives, but.
Yeah, I can't, as long as they got them on their leashes.
He was able to control the dogs. My dog was alone.
Regulated by US, or Native States Department of, right, of Oklahoma, yeah, that's what we can do, we have a leash law, obviously.
Yeah.
It's not on a leash, but like.
It's all we can do.
It's all we can do.
Can't pick the dog.
I know when I saw her dog, that's the problem.
Yeah.
You know, I walked you off, the nap over there.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I've seen people walk across the street just to get away from people walking the dog, and just. Anything else? I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven, two, four.
Right, so the.
Did you think of the scene now? Did you, when you were in this?
Always a film, they email that important. No, I didn't get, well, I didn't check in.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I did see an email and quarter picture, I probably wouldn't use that.
Yeah. Uh, somewhat. Really long, yeah, he's still weak. He, he's doing good, it's good, it's so good to see him back there. Yeah. Yeah, it's so good to have him back. Yeah, he's, he's there for, I don't know, I think two hours a day, I think, four hours.